Welcome back everyone. Uh, sorry it's been a bit of a delay for me. Uh, some things have been going on over the last few days. I'm gonna be, I'm, I've started the process of going back to school, so. That's been a bit of a tiring ordeal for me, so. We got thi- I got, I got this video done today and I have it uploaded today, so. Uh, we all have some kinda, kinda carrying on over before I do my Saturday night scare stream tonight. So, I hope, I hope this, I hope this makes up for me not uploading yesterday. The bu- the bus rattles a bit as it tr- and it trundles down the street. The plastic hanging straps swaying gently overhead. Oh, public transportation, you're always there for me. I can, I can always count on a ride from you, especially when meeting up with a cute purple haired girl at the, at the bookstore. Uh oh, there's a, there's, there is now a one hour delay because a couch was left on the tracks. Ever since I got closer to Yuri, I've really been speeding, speeding through books. Having someone to read with definitely helps in making, helps in making sure I finish the books, but it also hasn't felt like a chore in a while. Suddenly, the bus lets out a high pitched whine as it eases into a bus stop. Here's where I get off. I'm not too far away from the bookstore now. There it is. And there's Yuri. I wave at her although she doesn't see me. She's fidgeting with her hair and glancing around presumably looking for me. After a moment, we make eye contact, she immediately smiles widely and stands up straighter. Aww.
Hi Flam.
Hey Yuri, did I keep you waiting?
Oh no, I arrived only a moment ago.
Thanks for inviting me out by the way.
No problem, I was going to buy something here anyway, so.
Well, let's head in then, shall we?
Let's.
It's subtle, but I smell the scent of lavender and a touch of jasmine oil as she brushes past me. Once inside, that scent blends in nicely with the traces of old paper and ink emanating from the store. There's a sense of calm that envelops us the moment we step inside, bolstered by a quiet lulling sound of flipping pages. Plastic covers gleam from the bookshelves as we pass by, and with each and every step you're inside, Yuri seems to walk with a little more energy.
I haven't been in here for a while now.
Really? When was the last time you were he- you were here?
I believe it was roughly a month ago, on a Sunday.
Why haven't you visited more than?
You know, it's been busy. I shouldn't be spending so much money on books too.
She sighs quietly and runs her fingers over the spines of a nearby row of books.
I've been trying to read books online instead to save money on, to save on money, but being able to physically flip through the pages feels so much better. It's as if I just need something tangible in my hands.
Yeah, I think I understand that feeling. It's definitely easy to get distracted if I'm reading something online. Hmm, there are a lot of books I haven't seen before, uh, there are a lot of books I haven't seen before in this aisle. One novel with a particularly or- ornately designed cover catches my eye. The Awakening. It looks like one of those books considered classic literature. Yuri notices me eyeing it.
Oh, are you curious about some of the novels here?
I don't know, maybe that one over there. Why, have you read a lot of books in this section? She pulls the copy of The Awakening out from the shelf.
Hmm, Kate Chopin's The Awakening. I did read this in middle school. To be honest, I don't recall too much about the plot. Hold on, let me refresh my memory with the summary of the book cover.
Her eyes quickly flit over the words in the back and a moment later, Yuri looks up, Yuri looks up with a smile.
Uh, yes, it's all coming back to me. This was quite the enjoyable read from what I remember.
So what's it about?
Hmm, well, it's considered a milestone of early feminist literature due to its social commentary and in-depth look into the main character's psyche. The novel's about a married woman in late nineteenth century New Orleans who struggles to find a place for herself in the restrictive society she lives in. Honestly speaking, I believe I liked the book so much because I could relate to some of the themes.
Oh, like what?
Well, some more sound, salient themes are, are solitude and the impact of social constraints and expectations. It's easy to find yourself falling into a solitary lifestyle without soci- societal support. In a way, detaching yourself from society can feel empowering and that you can take control of yourself away from outside influence. But it can also be quite lon- lonely.
I can see how that theme would resonate with Yuri so deeply. She must have been alone or even in middle school.
The so- societal expectations present in that era's version of the American South all work to repress the main character's true desires and needs. Especially since the main character is a married woman who has to struggle with gender roles too.
So you can relate some of the expectations in the book's society to other socie- to our society then?
Hmm, of course, modern day society isn't as oppressive as the Victorian era's society. But still, there will always be social norms that people would hard press to disobey. At any rate, Japanese society is rather restrictive in comparison to other countries.
You got that right. When I was a kid, I really wanted to move to America because of how freeing it seemed. Country of rock and roll, alright?
I don't know about that, but it's definitely a more individualistic culture. Anyway, The Awakening is a beautifully written book. I'd recommend it if you wanted to read the critique of society, although the ending is quite depressing. Uh oh, was that a spoiler?
Nah, you're good. If you're gonna recommend the book this passionately, then I guess I have to give it a shot. I take the copy of the novel from Yuri and turn, and turn it over in my hands.
I'll be looking forward to hearing what you think about it.
We continue strolling around the bookstore some more, this time looking for a book for Yuri. She pauses at a display and flips through the paper, a paperback book with a black cover. What's that book?
Battle Royale. I assume you've heard of it before?
Yeah, I actually read it a bit before. I know I finished it though. Speaking, speaking of rock and roll in America, the main character is in it, the main character in it is pretty oppressed with the US. Although I'm guessing that you know that already.
Well, I'm embarrassed to admit that I've never gotten to reading it before. There are just too many books I need to read.
How about rea- how about we read it together then?
I'd like that.
She smiles shyly, her eyes twinkling behind her bangs. And with that, we leave for the front, front counter to purchase our books. The sun's blindingly bright outside which contrasts against the chilly nature of the air.
Um, would you like to go get some to eat?
Sure, there's a bakery nearby that's pretty good. They even serve tea. Last time I went there, I had black tea.
Oh, that sounds lovely. Feel free to lead the way.
Within a few minutes, we're standing in front of the bakery. Through the glass storefront, we can see rows upon rows of pastries and breads. As we enter, a wave of warm air carrying the scent of sweets and teas wash over us.
It smells wonderful in here.
If you weren't hungry before, you'd definitely be hungry now. Plus they have, plus they even have oolong tea here.
Really? I suppose I know what I'll be getting.
I think I'll have a cup as well. As we approach the counter to order our drinks, the brownies on display once again catch my eye. You know what? I think I'll have a brownie too. I grab a tray and a pair of tongs to choose my own pastries. Yuri falls behind, hesitantly grabbing a tray of her own. Are you getting anything else to eat?
Hmm, I think I'll have a small slice of vanilla cake.
By the time we finish grabbing our food, the lines clear up. Hi, would that be all for you? I'll have some oolong tea as well and as this brownie. The cashier quickly rings me up while another worker bustles away in the background to prepare the tea. And your order miss?
Um.
Yuri sets her tray down on the counter with a clatter. Her voice is barely audible.
Yes, I'll have the oolong tea and a slice of vanilla cake.
Excuse me, could you repeat that?
I'll have the oolong.
Her voice wavers as red creps up her face as she glances desperately between me and the, and the cashier. Should I do something? Okay. The last time I did this, the lo- the la- the last time I tried to step in to help her and to take charge, she, there was a bit of resentment in it, so this time. I'm gonna let her do her thing and let her order. I don't want to impose and assume that Yuri can't do it for, can't do anything for herself. Well, to be fair, it does seem like she wants me to help her. But I don't wanna act like her dad or anything. Either way, Yuri seems to have picked up on the fact that I'm reluctant to step in. I attempt to smile in an apologetic yet encouraging way, but she only affords me a single glance before looking down.
C- could I get a hem, um, u- oolong tea and a, a slice of vanilla, and a slice of vanilla cake?
She rushes through the last half of her sentence, slurring her words together. Fortunately, the cashier seems to be able to make out what she's saying this time. Alright, we'll have your teas done in just a minute. Just as the cashier said, it only takes about a minute or so until our teas are ready. Yuri avoids eye contact as, contact as we pick up our cups of tea. With our food in hand, we make our way over to some, to some tables to sit down at. As we walk, she keeps her head ducked down and her eyes steadily trained to the, on the floor. Really? It's... Oh, this girl! When I help her, she's resentful. When I don't help her, she's resentful. You make up your mind Yuri! Hey Yuri?
Y- yes?
Are you alright?
Yeah, I'm fine. It's just that...
She starts playing with her hair, stroking it quickly. Don't worry about what happened.
How can I not? I'm completely socially inept.
Hey, it's probably worse in your, hey, it's probably worse in your head than it actually was in real life, you know? And besides, you can just keep on practicing.
That doesn't stop me from feeling ashamed of myself.
It's alright to feel that way Yuri. It might be hard now, but I'm sure you'll get better at, at it over time. Just need to work at it, at it, little by little. Still a bit shaken, she takes a deep breath to calm herself.
I, I suppose you're right.
You might not be as good, you might not be as goo- you might not be as good at talking to people as Monica is, but hey, who is? Yuri glances down, tar- tearing tiny pieces of paper net, netting apart.
Your logic makes sense, it's just...
She takes a moment to collect her thoughts, gathering up all her little, all, all her letter into a neat pile.
What makes me most uncomfortable is the feeling of being judged.
You feel judged?
You know, like when the cashier looked at me with pity as I stumbled over my words.
Yuri, I'm sure they didn't notice at all, or if they did, they probably forgot about it already. It's like the spotlight, it's like the spotlight effect, you know? When you think people are no- when you think people notice you more than they actually do.
I know, but I can't exactly help how I feel. Regardless, I, I'll try to be more outgoing. Um, c- could I rely on you to help me? Not all the time of course, but just when I'm feeling particularly flustered.
Of course, having someone that God you always helps, no matter what you're trying to get better at.
Thank you Flam.
She smiles sweetly at me, and I can't help but grin in return.
It's difficult to stay completely logical when my body is fully panicking.
Oh.
To stay completely logical when my body is fully panicking. My mind goes blank and the words get stuck in my throat when that happens. And then all I become aware of is how loudly my heart is beating and of how hard it is to breathe.
Does this happen every time?
Well, it does when I'm nervous or when I don't perfectly rehearse what I'm going to say. I wish I could speak half as well as I write. If I could do that, I'd be speaking much more often.
Dang, I don't know it was that bad for her. Shit guys, I screwed up again. Yuri, you're eloquent enough, when you talk to me at least. And with practice, before you know it, you'll be speaking in the same way to everyone else too.
Well, I hope so. Uh, I'm sorry for bringing the mood down with the subject.
No, you're totally fine. I want, I want to know more about you, and that goes for both things you like and dislike about yourself. And from, and from what I know about you, there's not much to dislike.
I don't know about that, but your continual support is ever appreciated.
Don't mention it. With the conversation reaching its natural conclusion, we finally dig into our respective sweets. The inside of my brownie is moist and thick, the sweetness not too overwhelming. I look around while savoring my bite, chewing at a slow pace. All the streets are still dotted with people here and there, the foot traffic has started to lighten up. When I look back at Yuri, I catch her looking at me, her eyes, her eyes filled with curiosity. Once she realizes that she's been caught staring, she sheepishly turns red in an admission of guilt.
Uh, I'm sorry Flam, I didn't mean to.
Relax, it's something to apologize for. Embarrassed, she glances away from me. Somehow, I get the feeling that she wants to say something but is too shy to say it. As I muse over Yuri's thoughts, I pop another piece of brownie in my mouth. How's the cake Yuri?
Hmm, hmm, oh, it's a bit sweet but very light. I'm assuming you're enjoying your brownie, judging by the smile on your face?
She covers her mouth with a hand as she giggles. Okay, you caught me. The brownie's really good.
I see.
I should have rather taken a sip of my oolong tea, and the sweetness of the brownie really makes the tea that much more bitter. Maybe I shouldn't have ordered it. Yuri sees several more looks at me as I continue eating. Does she want something? What's up?
Uh, uh, um, nothing. Er, actually, could, can I try a bit of your brownie?
It's really pretty cute, how flustered she can get. Of course, but only, but, but only if I get to try some of yours. I can almost swear that there's a che- a cheeky glint in Yuri's eye as she swaps our trays around for a moment. Yuri's cake is quite light with a very understa- understated sweetness to its fluffy interior. Huh, that cake is pretty good, way less sweet than the, than the brownie though, so I don't know if y'all like mine. She pops a chunk of the brownie in her mouth as I say that. Man, her eyes are really lighting up. I didn't really expect her to have such a, such a sweet tooth. And I take that back. You clearly liked the brownie a lot.
Well, the inclusion of dark chocolate does cut through that sweetness of it. It's very dense and rich though.
You got that right. We continue enjoying the food and each other's company, slowly passing the day away. At the while, she smiles, tracing the rim of her, of her teacup with a finger.
I've really enjoyed our time here today Flam. This is a lovely little bakery as well. I'll have to revisit it on my own time.
Thanks. That's okay and say it. Huh, thank that's okay and say oria for introducing me to this place.
Oh, you, you came here together with them?
Nah, just happened to see them meeting here a while, but, well, see them meeting here a while back.
Uh, I see.
But yeah, we should definitely come back here again sometime.
Yes, that'd be nice.
With our food finished, we get up and throw away our trash. Hey, you wanna catch the bus? I think one should be coming around soon.
Hmm, that sounds like a good idea.
We settle down on the bus stops bench, sitting close together but not too close. I nervously tap my fingers on my knee, looks like I, looks like I've run out of things to say. But surprisingly, Yuri saves the day by speaking up.
Today has gone by much faster than I expected. It seems like only an hour ago that I left the house for the bookstore.
She shifts the book in her bag and smiles down at them. I guess that means it was pretty fun then.
I suppose so.
Praying down the road for a moment, I spot a glaring setup headlights slowly grow- growing closer. Hey, looks like the bus is here. It stops with a low hiss and I motion for Yuri to get, to get on ahead, I mean. Fortunately, it doesn't look too crowded. There should be plenty of seats for us to sit together.
Yeah!
Suddenly, Yuri stumbles on the steps leading on, into the bus, falling onto her hands and knees causing her books to tumble out of her bag. I futilely reach out to grab her, but I'm not close enough to reach her in time. A few people peep around curiously to, to look for the source of the commotion. Yuri quickly stands, her face flustered as she scrambles to shove the books back in her bag, I reach down to help her. Here, let me help. You okay Yuri?
Uh, I'm fine.
With the last of, with, with the last of books back in her bag, we finally enter the bus. Yuri speeds over to the first seat she sees and sits down, keeping her head down as if avoiding the stares from, from the other passengers. She adamantly continues to stare out, 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 out the window as I slide into seat after her. You sure you're alright?
Other than my bruised pride and soul crushing embarrassment, yes, I'm fine.
Despite her words, I notice a wind sprinkling across her face.
Well, actually...
Yuri shifts her bag off her legs and gingerly touches her, her knees.
I believe I scraped her knees.
She's wearing black leggings as usual, so her knees are covered up, but that material has got to be pretty thin. I don't doubt that you got a bit banged up back there. That was a pretty bad spill you took. Her face grows redder as I say that. Whoops. Guess I should probably try not to embarrass her even more. Do you want me to take a look at it?
N- no!
Her sound upper startles me a bit.
Uh, sorry, I just meant that it's fine. I'll just check it when I get home and bandage it as, as needed.
Alright, for sure.
Sorry.
Hmm? For what?
Well, for one thing, shouting at you just now.
Hey, it's alright. I know you didn't mean anything by it.
Even so...
She bites her lip and runs her hands through her hair.
You also had to help me pick everything back up, a- and...
Yuri, you have nothing to apologize for. As your friend, I like helping you out when I can. All this stuff has really not bothered me, so it's all good. If I ever do have a problem with anything, I promise that I'll tell you, okay? So you don't have to stress out over any hidden meanings of my words, because there won't be any.
I, I get it. Uh, this has been so embarrassing.
You just had an unlucky day today, that's all. Try not to worry about it too much.
You see, you're something done.
Yuri mutters that last statement to herself, probably intending for me to miss it. The conversation fades out after this, leaving us simply watching the scenery blur by outside. Although we're not talking, it doesn't feel awkward between us. Just sitting here together like this, it's simple but enjoyable. After a while though, I set to break the silence. It's nice to physi- it's nice to physically be with Yuri, but I want to continue getting to know her better too. By the way, it seems like exams are coming up.
Hmm, it seems like we've been talk- talking about them more and more lately.
Sorry, we could talk about something else if you want.
No, no, it's only natural that I come up in a conversation. After all, we are students.
Yeah, I think I've just been thinking about them more often because I think things will go well for me this time.
Hmm, and why is that? Then, not to imply that you always do badly on them or anything.
I raise an eyebrow and smirk at her. Oh really? You know, I may not be as smart as you are, but I know how to read books real good too. Yuri's brow furrows in cont- in concerti- in consternat- in consternation for a moment because, a- a- as she processes my words. Consternation, okay. There, I said it right! I know words! Words, words for, words for the good, I s- 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 words!
Um, you know that...
She pauses, looks like she can, looks like she's finally catching on.
Oh Flam.
Uh-huh, so you're finally learning to read my sarcasm eh? We start chuckling a bit together. Yuri's the first one to stop although I s- although I soon follow suit.
I suppose that's how everyone thinks of me though.
Huh? What do you mean? You know, I mean that you're humorless or something, right? Yuri's mouth tightens when I say that.
That's, what? Oh you stupid cat!
Jeez, dumbass.
That's not what I was getting at, but now that you mentioned it...
Yuri, you have a perfectly good sense of humor. But thinking about it, she isn't a particularly funny person, is she? She's sweet, but she's also more serious than humorous. Either way, it doesn't matter if you're funny or not, you're fine just the way you are. I can't read Yuri's expression. Is she alright? Is she upset? Music stopped. Why the music stop?
Somehow, I don't believe that the first thing people think when I come to my, when I come to mind is funny.
Yuri?
Flam, what characteristics do you, do you think define me?
Um, she's really put me on the spot here. Oh, you're pretty smart for one thing.
I see.
Like, I'm sure y'all ace all your exams without my, without much effort.
That's what my teachers usually say to me as well.
Why does she seem upset about this? So what's the problem?
You would think that there's a problem, right? And yes, it does feel nice to be praised in that, in this way. But it also causes people to carry certain expectations for me.
Certain expectations? You mean things like people always thinking y'all do great on tests?
Y- yes, to an extent. Getting singled out for a specific trait does nothing but color other, others' perceptions of you.
But, everyone always labels everyone else. It's not like being associated with, with specific characteristics is a unique thing. Otherwise, how else are people going to describe the, to describe each other? If you are smart, um, am I not supposed to point it out?
Well, that's true. I should have been more precise in my wording. What I mean is having one specific thing that perpetually ident- that's perpetually identifying you. Take Sayori for instance. How would you describe her?
Uh, I guess I'd say she's sunny, like super cheerful and bubbly.
And that's how you always think of her then?
Well, I guess so. Where are you going with this?
Don't you think that she ever feels unhappy though? Or, to be more exact, emotions other than happiness?
Huh, um, I mean maybe, but I've never seen her unhappy before. She's only ever smiled around me. Did she say something to you about her feeling bad?
Don't worry, it's something like that. I was just using her as an example. But you see, right? How thinking of someone in a certain way changes the thought processes that are related to them?
I guess so. Jeez. It's kinda weird thinking about, thinking about Sayori being sad. Yeah, that's what depression does to you.
And that's precisely why, why I chose her as an example for you.
I kinda feel bad now for thinking of Sayori like that.
To return to our original subject, I feel the same way about being called smart. Not only does it cause people to think of me as two dimensional, but it also turns me into a subject of comparison. I'm always expected to behave in a certain way or to possess certain qualities.
And that pressure is the part that bothers you the most?
Yes, you could say that. Whenever I don't know something, it makes me feel that much more like a failure. It, it's stupid, I know. No pun intended.
I chuckle a bit at that last statement causing her to return a waning smile. Yuri, it's not stupid. I'm pretty sure a lot of people feel the same way, especially other students who are always labeled as smart. Well, I'm just a normal guy myself, so no one's ever really associated me with anything in particular. But I'm sure that if you talk to Monica about this, she'd be able to relate, to relate a lot.
Maybe.
She sighs, brushing her hair out of her eyes.
I don't want people to keep seeing me in this way. But at the same time, if people were to stop thinking of me as, as intelligent, it, it would paradoxically make me feel... Hmm, it's hard to describe.
Would it make you feel like you lost something special?
You could say that.
The window besides us reflects Yuri's pensive expression as a pale ghost in the glass.
Other than being called intelligent, I don't have too much going on for me. But then again, if I were so smart, I wouldn't keep acting so logical all the time.
Yuri squeezes her hands into fists, pressing her fingernail, her fingernails into her palms so forcefully that they leave little pale half moons on her skin. I can only imagine what she's thinking about right now. She's probably running through all of her perceived missteps and blunders. Well, I think you're wrong about something.
About what?
I don't think you act illogically at all. The way you act is human. Yuri turns to me with a bemused expression on her face. All your idiosync- All your idiosyncrasies, all the things you do well and the, all the mistakes you may make. Everything adds up to create an unmistakable human, unmistakably human persona. And you're not simply human either. You're a gentle and kind-hearted person. I mean, you recently took care of me when I was sick. When I first joined the club, you took the time to make sure I was enjoying myself too. I didn't realize you felt that way about being called smart and I'm sorry if I kind of bought into that, the set, into that depiction of you. But just know that you're more than just smart to me. You're considerate, insightful, complex, and you're a good chef to boot.
Flam.
Anyway, you're a lot of things, but at the end of the day, to me, you're Yuri. I don't know where I was going with that, with that spiel, but I'm kinda proud of myself for ending it so well. Let's hope that she found my monologue inspiring as well. She's gone very still while I was talking, seemingly listening intently to my words. And now, well, she's blushing, so that's gotta be a good sign. As Yuri looks up, up to me smiling, I'm dazzled by her sparkling eyes.
Thank you Flam. I don't know what to say.
Hey, I'm just telling you the truth.
I'm glad to have someone like you beside me.
Now it's my turn to blush.
It's...
It's all good. As we approach Yuri's stop, we sit in companionable silence for a bit.
Flam?
Uh huh.
Um, I don't know if you realized... I don't know if you realize, but exams are coming up.
Yuri, making a joke? Wow, seriously? That's the first I've heard of it. She smiles indulgently as I play along.
I was thinking, why don't we study together?
Hey, it's actually a really great idea. You can come over to my house after school, we can study together. Well, I don't know how much I can help you, but I certainly benefit from your help. Yuri nods and opens her mouth to speak, but pauses when she realizes that the bus is at our stop.
Looks like I'm getting off here, then. I'll message you about the details later. About the details later.
I get up to let her through once in the aisle. She steps towards the exit, but then stops to turn back to me.
Goodbye, Flam. Hope you have a pleasant evening.
See you at school. She smiles and then disappears into the darkness outside. That was, that was complex. That was a very tender moment there. Brrr. I'm really starting to feel the chill of the nippy November air. If this is any indication, it looks like winter is gonna be a pretty bad, is gonna be pretty bad this year. Wringing on my hands, I start to journey to school, although I stop once I see a familiar red bow on the sidewalk.
Hey, Flam.
Morning, Sayori. Man, it's cold, isn't it? She shivers slightly, no surprise given her uniform, much like mine, isn't really built for warmth.
Ah, it really is. My hands are the worst. I'm always forgetting my gloves.
Forgetting? Or have you just lost them again?
Same thing, really. Anyway, how have you been recently?
Yeah, pretty good, thanks. Brr, really cold. How about you?
Yeah, I've been okay. This year feels like it, this, it look, feels like it's going by so quickly, doesn't it?
Tell me about it. Since joining the literature club, i- it all feels like a blur.
Yeah, you really sound in well, haven't you? I'm so glad that you managed to make friends with everyone so soon, especially Yuri.
Huh? What's that supposed to mean?
Nothing, I'm just teasing. It really looks like you two are getting along, huh?
Yeah, yeah, we are. She's just really fun to talk to. I always shrouded a mystery, so I never really know what to expect. But it's not a bad thing, you know?
I was kinda surprised to see her open up to you so much. I always thought she would just keep to herself.
Yeah, I guess. I'm not complaining, though. I'm just glad that I managed to get her out of her shell, you know? I didn't think I'd have anything to talk to her, to her about when we first met, but I'm glad we have been, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to have been proven wrong.
She really is smart now again, isn't she?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Never met anyone like her before. I was kinda scared she'd be really judgmental, cuz, well, we both know I'm no poet, nor do I have an, an extensive taste in reading. But as I got to know her more and more, I feel like we actually have a lot more in common than I realized. She's really opened, she's really opened my eyes to a whole new world of literature, and I'm really grateful for that. Sir, Sayori is quiet for a moment, although truthfully, I don't really know this. My brain is still preoccupied thinking about all the time I've spent with Yuri.
You were staring up into space.
Oh, haha, sorry, we're just thinking about stuff. She looks down for a moment.
What kind of stuff do you guys talk about? I've never seen you so lost in thought, so I'm guessing it was pretty deep.
Would you believe me if I said books? The Awakening, to give an example?
I don't think I've heard of it. What's it about?
Oh, yeah, that's a question. Well, the main theme, themes are about society. Society, constraints, loneliness, expectations, that kind of thing. I didn't realize how lonely Yuri was. Discussing the book with, and drawing upon the parallels between its themes and her life really made me notice. Although, in a strange way, it made me enjoy our time together. I felt like she finally had the proper friend she could talk to about her hobbies and walk around, wa- walk with around town. I have the feeling she doesn't really get to discuss her literary interests in much detail, which is really sad. But seeing how happy and excited she was, it really put a smile on my own face.
That's just like you, Flam. Always looking out for others. I remember you were like that with me when we were kids.
Uh-huh, I remember those days well. They feel like such a long time ago, don't they?
They really do.
Our conversation is cut short by school looming in sight. After bidding each other goodbye, we both make our ways to our respective classes. About half an hour has passed since the start of the lesson. After explaining the task, Sakurai le- left us to our own de- devices while he sits at the front making some pa- marking some papers. It's amazing how much more en- engaging the material, the material is when you actually have an interest in it. I can't exactly say I'm a history buff, but spending time with Yuri, especially when we talk about themes, has made me appreciate what the world was like during the previous century. It's easy for us to see now, but back then, no one realized Germany was a breeding ground for hatred.
Everything going alright for that, huh?
I'll get on my answer. You're right, this century really is interesting.
Of course, although it's rather unfortunate how, how I'm limited with how much depth I can go into, given that this is just a high school history. Oh, baldatash. Anyway, I wanted to ask you how you're feeling for your upcoming exams.
Pretty confident, actually. I've been doing a lot of readings, so I reckon I'll do pretty well with the, with the essay subjects.
Well, in that, in that case, I expect your history marks to be true reflection of how amazing your teacher is.
Sorry, sorry, a teacher humor.
Anyway, that's encouraging to hear. How about the sciences and mathematics?
Yeah, well. Not my strong suit, but I have a few study sessions with Yuri, and I'm hoping that she consolidate my, and I'm hoping she consolidate my knowledge. That's a, okay, that's a, that's a mistake in the sentence there. I've had a few study sessions with Yuri, and I'm hoping she consolidate my knowledge. Yeah, it, it, I, I should read, and I'm hoping she's consolidated my knowledge.
Ah, study sessions. You're adopting a very commendable approach to ensure you're a well-rounded student. It has nothing to do with you wanting to spend more time with Yuri, I assume.
She got big boobs.
Just teasing. But for what it's worth, take it from me, you're definite, you're definitely killed two birds with one stone.
He winks and chuckles to himself, a warm flush courses through my cheeks as I watch him, as I watch him as he approaches the next student. Well, he strikes me as the kind of guy who's been in my situation before. With the sound of the bell ringing in my ears, I pick up my things and head for the literature club. After waving hello to the girls, I take a seat. Soon, Monica kicks, soo- soon after, Monica kickstarts the session.
Okay, everyone. As you're all aware, exams are coming up, so over the next few weeks, I think it would be best if we put these sessions on hold. I know no one really wants to, but unfortunately, I'll be too busy to run them unless someone else wants to run these sessions in my place.
There's a general murmur of conversation. It wouldn't really feel the same without you, to be honest.
Agreed.
I could do with some more time to focus on math and stuff anyway. As much as I enjoy these sessions, they don't really help out with that.
How about, how about you, Sayori, Natzuki? Yeah, it's a shame. It's a shame, but I understand. Fine by me. We need to have a cri- we need to have a Christmas party, though. Like we, like we did with Halloween. We could definitely plan that af- after our exams are over. For now, though, let's start, let's share poems, shall we? That was a good session to end it on for now, guys. See you all soon. Oh, and Sayori, you wanted to talk?
With that, I head for the door with Yuri in tow. Ironically enough, I find myself thinking of Sayori this time as I walk, as I walk home with Yuri. What does she think about when she walks home? I kinda feel guilty walking home with Yuri instead of Sayori. But Sayori stayed behind to talk to Monica after the club meeting ended, so a part of me ca- a part of me is kinda glad that I get to talk to Yuri alone, though.
Flam?
Eh? Um, sorry, I sort of spaced out for a bit.
It's fine. You must be feeling stressed from all the exam preparation.
Yeah, totally.
A- anyway, I was just saying, I'm glad that we did end up planning this study session together. With my help, perhaps you'll feel less stressed after today. Uh, um, that is to say, if you need any help at all. I, I'm not trying to assume anything about your capabilities or anything.
Don't worry, I'm pretty sure I will need your help. How've you been, though? Reading any new books?
Uh, I actually did start on one fairly recently, The Stranger by Albert Camus.
Huh? Isn't it any good?
It is, at least in my opinion. Simply put, it's about a man who feels like, well, a stranger in society. He's overwhelmingly indifferent to life, and as a result, freely disregards social norms. I don't know if you're familiar with Camus, but he wrote a lot of, a lot on the absurd.
What, like ridiculous things?
Hmm, more like absurdity in the philosophical sense. Well, he doesn't explicitly speak on, speak on and, speak on it in The Stranger, but the novel is heavily entrenched in themes of absurd, absurdity, absurdity. And they're shown through the seeming, and that irri- irrationality of humanity through the plot's events. Funnily enough, the main character only finds happiness after realizing that there is no inherent meaning to life. Uh, um, not that I actually find it funny or anything.
Geez, she's always overthinking her words. It's cute when she gets flustered, but it also makes me worry for her. Well, I do what I can to distract her from her nerves. Hmm, so that absurdity comes from the lack of purpose in the undercurrent.
Not quite. Rather, it comes from the contradiction between the sim- sim- simultaneous need and inability to find that purpose.
Dang, kind of a depressing subject matter, don't you think?
I suppose so. But interestingly, Camus still thought that we should search for a meaning to life anyway.
Hey, wanna continue our conversation inside? With a start, Yuri loo- Yuri looks up to see what, that, that we reached to my house.
Uh-uh, I didn't realize that we'd already arrived.
I don't doubt that. After all, our conversation's been pretty interesting. We make our way up to the front door as I run it through my bag to find my keys. Right, there they are. The lock smoothly turns with a sharp click, and with that, we're in. I toss my bag onto the couch while Yuri places her ge- well, your agent, while Yuri places hers gently on the floor. As I stretch, a yawn breaks across, a, a yawn breaks across my face.
Tired already?
Damn it, the word yawn always, always gets me. She sits down on the couch and smiles at me with a gentle chuckle. Honestly, I'm always tired when I get home from school. I can only take so much schooling before I collapse and die.
I suppose I need a, a defibrillator already when we start studying.
Hope you know, hope you know CPR. I find myself slouching down on the couch as we pu- as we pull out our revi- our revision materials. So many notes to look over. I really don't wanna start. Hey, speaking of death, you know how we, you know how we were speaking about absurdism before? Isn't all that kind of similar to exist, to existent, to existentialism or nihilism? Ni- or nihilism?
Yes. Although I'd say that absurdist thought, although I'd say that absurdist thought lies somewhere in between those two.
Ah, mouse, uh, throat's drying up.
For instance, existentialists would say that you can find a meaning to life. Nihilists would say that you, you can't, and absurdists would assert that you can to, you can to some extent.
So what would you say your meaning of, your meaning to life is?
So you're finally asking this question? Hmm, to be honest, I'm not too sure. I don't think I've read enough to form a solid, any solid conclusions.
Really? You ha- you haven't read enough?
I- it's not that hard to believe, is it? There are so many books out there that I wanna read, but that I may never get to. Maybe, maybe you could say that for now. My purpose is to learn to embrace the absurd. Because then, I might be able to learn how to get, how to let go of all my self doubts and baggage.
And those feelings you have are pretty relatable. There are a lot of things which we might care about that really don't matter in the grand scheme of things. And learning to let go of those psychological barriers is something that can probably generate a lot of meaning, I think. So in my opinion, that's a great meaning to derive. No matter what meaning you try to make out of this world, though, I'll try to support you along the way.
Thank you. It's difficult to put into words, but I truly appreciate all your continual encouragement. I'll probably have to do a lot more introspection throughout my life. But it's reassuring to know that that's a good use of my time. I hope that someday, I'll be able to grow stronger.
I definitely think you have it and you do that.
M- maybe.
Suddenly embarrassed, Yuri shuffles her papers around as if to create a distraction.
Uh, um, on the topic of good uses of time, we should probably get to studying.
Aw, man, I guess it can't be helped. We spread out all the textbooks and notes on the coffee table to begin deciding on where to start. But as we get ready, I notice a small smile breaking through Yuri's attempt at a serious face. Ah, shoot. The pen that I've been spinning twirls, uh, my grass and clatters across the table. Yuri jumps a bit, startled by the sudden noise. She must have been concentrating hard on her problem sets. It's no wonder that she's a better student than me with how incredibly focused she can get. Well, it's not like I set the bar high or anything, but she's just really diligent. She seems virtually immune to distractions and boredom.
Ah, pen!
Unlike me, my mind probably wanders eighty percent of the time.
It's been a while since we started, hasn't it?
Looks like Yuri picked up on how bored I am. Yeah, we actually got a lot done. Thanks for all your help with math and physics, by the way.
Ah, you're welcome. Helping you solidified everything in my mind anyway, so.
You don't give yourself enough credit. You're a real lifesaver.
Thank you. I know that sometimes have har- I know that I sometimes have a hard time articulating my thoughts on certain topics, so just let me know if you need me to explain something again.
Well, I think I got the gist of everything for now. My stomach gurgles before I can continue talking about schoolwork. I don't know, no, how does dinner sound?
Uh-uh, I wouldn't want to impose.
Come on, I'm gonna be cooking for myself anyway. What's one more mouth to feed?
Well, if you're absolutely sure.
Of course I am. Actually, do you want extra to take home, too? I wanna ma- I wanna make it up to your parents for keeping you away for so long.
Uh, they won't need it. You needn't go that far to be a gracious host.
Alright, then, if you're sure. You gonna study a little more, or do you wanna help, help make sure I don't burn the house down in the kitchen?
Uh, I'd love to help, but.
She bites her lip, her cheeks pink.
Would it be alright if I were to do a couple of stretches in the living room while you cooked? I apologize if this is inappropriate.
Huh? You mean something like yoga?
Um, a little, although I've never specifically done yoga before. It feels a bit embarrassing.
It's embar- it's embarrassing? As I try to imagine Yuri doing yoga, my cheeks begin to heat up. Okay, yeah, I can see why Yuri would think that about yoga.
But anyway, there's just some simple stretches to help relieve some of my back and neck pain. I have terrible posture, and sitting down for extended periods of time with my back hunched over tends to make my muscles incredibly tense.
Posture, huh? Well, you gotta do what you gotta do. Feel free to do your exercises in the living room, then. She smiles gratefully at me.
It shouldn't take too long.
I ponder my dinner, dinner options as I head into the kitchen. Hmm, I do still have some, some frozen dumplings left. But I don't really wanna make it seem like they're the only things I ever eat. As much as I love them, a man's gotta have his limits. So, what's another dish that could somehow impress Yuri? Rice is always a good option, but I don't know if I have anything to make side dishes with. I quickly wash the rice and pop in to the rice cooker while I think. If I still have some pre-made curry rou- curry rou left in the box, then bingo. I have enough ingredients for it, so curry it is. Good thing I went grocery shopping. My mind wanders as I dice the chicken and season it. This kinda reminds me of when Sayori and Yuri cooked for me when I was sick. Talking to mom about the house almost getting set on fire was not fun to say the least. I'm just glad she understood that they were taking care of me and that mistakes happen. Speaking of, I better get the stove going. After a while, I've got all the vegetables and chicken going in a pot. All I need now is chicken stock, seasoning, and the curry rou, and I'll be done. Wonder how Yuri's doing. Hold on, I should focus on making the food first. Hold on, I should focus on making the food first. No need to pu- no need to pull a Sayori here. The sweet and slightly spicy smell of curry has completely per- permeated the, the kitchen by now. Permeated, that's what, that's the word. Permeated the kitchen by now. It was just like when I was a kid. Back then, it'd be dad standing here making the curry. We'd all sit around the table for dinner, talking about our days and the days ahead. I miss those times. But I just need to focus on living in the here and now. All that stuff is in the past. Otherwise, that wouldn't make anyone happy. I'm just gonna check on Yuri before I continue down this train of thought. Hey Yuri, you doing okay? I sharp inhale through teeth sounds from the living room. Did I starve her? Whoops.
Y- yeah.
Her voice seems a bit strained as she answers back. I didn't accidentally mess up her stretching, did I?
I'll be there in a moment.
Uh, it's okay. Feel free to take as much time as you need. I'll just be here. A few minutes later, I have the curry la- ladled into two dishes alongside fluffy white rice. As a fun cue, Yuri finally enters the kitchen, sniffing the air appreciably.
Uh, apologies for taking so long, Flam.
Nah, it's fine. I made curry before, so I've got this.
It looks great, though. I haven't had Japanese curry in a while.
Well, free, feel free to dig in, then. She smiles as she settles down into the meal. Eating together with Yuri feels almost like an intimate exercise. She carefully savors each bite as if she were, were a food critic, imprinting it, the dish to her memory. So, how's the food? Be- bring on all the critiques. I'm strong enough to handle them.
Your curry turned out quite well. Although, I believe you could've used some more salt and maybe a bit more heat.
Ah, you're the spice, you're the, you're into spicier dishes, eh?
Well, when it comes to curry, I suppose so. My, my mother did always prefer spicier foods. And that ended up influencing my own tastes.
Okay, don't mind the next time I cook dinner for ya. My own parents liked sweeter curries, probably because I don't have much of a spice tolerance to begin with.
There's no time like the present to begin building up that tolerance.
You got me there. Anyway, if you're finished, I can take care of the dishes.
Oh, n- no. You're the one who treated me, so I should wash them. I can't allow myself to be such a bother.
Hey, it's seriously no bother at all.
Bu- but.
Alright, if you're not backing down, how about a compromise? I can wash the dishes and then, and you can dry them.
Ah, that works.
We gather up all the dishes and pots and dump them in the sink. It doesn't take long for us to settle in a comfortable rhythm of washing and drying the dishes. Remember, I used to do this kinda stuff with my childhood friend. We wa- we would always go over to this older woman's house who couldn't really do stuff like this on her own, and we would work together to. Get some of the, get some of those things taken care of. I miss those days. However, my atten- my attention drifts more and more towards Yuri as time passes on. At one point, I'm looking over in her direction more than I am at the dishes themselves. Well, she'll probably call me out if my washing gets too sloppy. She's got that deep look of concentration on her face again. It's pretty amazing how she can get lost in doing things from studying and reading to even doing the dishes. That's something I seriously admire about her. She has an unwavering ability to completely devote herself to tasks at hand. Somehow, I can never see her giving anything up halfway through or leaving her work unfinished. Honestly speaking, it's a quality that a lot more people need.
Here, Flam?
Huh? What's up?
You've been washing your hands for almost a minute now.
Wait, what? I look down and see that I've been literally scrubbing my hands with a sponge. Okay, yeah, that's ba- that's, that, yeah, that's like the kingpin of spacing out right there. Oh, haha, sorry, I was just.
Were you lost in thought?
Yeah, guess you could say that. Sorry.
No need to apologize. You know how often it happens to me, after all. I'm surprised that you, I'm surprised that you were that preoccupied with your daydreams, though. What were you thinking about, if you don't mind me, if you don't mind my asking?
Well, I'm more surprised that Yuri is, isn't commenting about my staring at her, but it's good to know that I'm more stealthy than I thought. Either that, or she's grown a lot more used to me at this point. Oh, um, I was just thinking about how nice this day has been.
Uh, yes. It's been lovely studying with you today. It's always nice being with you. I never find it difficult to talk to you, and you always make me feel comfortable being myself.
Yeah, same here. We stare at each other for a moment, our blushing faces breaking into smiles.
Um, Flam? May I use your restroom?
She shuffles away for a bit, clearly keen to rush away to the bathroom. Uh, wasn't what I was expecting her to say, but if she needs to go, then, of course, Yuri, you know where it is, right?
Mm-hmm, th- thank you.
Quick footsteps follow her upstairs to the restroom. I don't know what I was really expecting, but guess I'll head back into the living room. It's not too late in the day yet, but it's already dark out. What's taking Yuri so long? Should I check on her? Shoot. I really hope my curry didn't upset her stomach somehow. I should probably see how she's doing, just in case. Just as I make it to the top, Yuri steps out of the bathroom.
Uh-oh, Flam.
Her breathing seems a bit irregular, and she looks noticeably more, more disheveled than I remembered. She must've noticed my concerned gaze as she quickly turns away.
Uh, um, is there something on my face?
Er, you were just taking a really long time, so I wanted to check if you were okay.
Uh, I'm fine, but thank you for your concern.
Her breathing is still suspiciously uneven. Are you sure?
I said I'm fine. Uh, I, I mean.
She takes a deep breath.
I'm sorry for snapping at you. I'm just feeling a little out of sorts.
Uh, no, I should be the one apologizing. I didn't mean to pry. Although, I don't even know what I'm prying into. It must be serious, though, if Yuri's getting this irritable.
It, it's no problem, Flam.
We're quiet as we make our way back downstairs. I wonder what she's thinking.
Um, it's starting to get late now.
Yep. I was just about to ask if you wanted to pack up and head out.
I probably should. I don't wanna keep you up too late on a school night.
Don't worry about it. I wish we could just hang out forever, but life has other plans. A light blush ting- ting- tinges Yuri's pale cheeks as she continues putting away her books.
Mm-hmm. Not to mention the bus schedule.
Yeah, we can't hate by missing that now, can we? There's a soft look in Yuri's eyes as she finally takes her bag and moves to stand beside me.
I believe I'm ready now.
Alright then, let's go. Walking to the nearest bus stop, our pace is fairly unhurried. But it's alright, it's nice. Leisurely walking through the night with Yuri by my side. Upon reaching the bus stop, we sit down and look up at the clear sky. Countless stars twinkle down from the endless ocean of the night. The darkness seems all the more deep and, and unfathomable when compared to the luminous moon. A melancholy smile graces Yuri's face, her eyes shining in the starlight.
Hey Flam, isn't it strange to think that some of those stars we're seeing could be, could, could already be dead? We just haven't realized it yet? And we may die a lo- and we, and we may die long before we ever realize it? Humans are infer- humans aren't ephemeral creatures, aren't they?
It's like as though you're not human yourself, but it seems kinda poetic. Our being able to appreciate and remember those stars, those stars' glory even after they disappear. Even though we might be short-lived in relation to the rest of the universe, I think it's lucky that we, that we'll still be able to experience such beauty.
That's a, that's a beautiful way of seeing it, Flam. You're right. People who die, we should be thankful that we were able to spend time with them at all. From dead star-
From dead stars to dead people, huh? I wonder if Yuri's experienced loss before. Looking back at her, though, it's clear she's once again drifted off into her thoughts. The even the bus's arrival seems to distract her. Hey Yuri, the bus is here.
Oh, you're right. I hadn't noticed.
The bus is pretty empty, although that's to be expected. Most people get off before it reaches residential areas. Yuri takes a window seat and then slides into the seat next to her. The night sky outside is still as dark as ever, but now it's filtered by the fluorescent light reflecting out, reflecting out the window. Yuri yawns politely, covering her mouth as she does so.
E- excuse me, I'm just feeling incredibly tired all of a sudden.
Yeah, same here. We were pretty productive today, weren't we? A few moments pass by quietly with the two of us swinging gently along with the bus. Without a word passing between us, Yuri starts leaning into me. At this point, my nose is filled with the scent of lavender, mint, and lilac. Although I might not be sure of what the scents exactly are, what I do know is that it smells nice. Besides, it just feels so right. I can't help but feel totally relaxed, the warm fuzziness inside me causing my perception of time to slow to a glacial pace. Suddenly, Yuri sits back up with a jolt.
Ah, sorry. I didn't realize that I was dozing off.
It's perfectly okay. I can say we can keep an eye out for your stop if you wanna close your eyes for a bit.
Uh, no, I'm fine.
She sure doesn't sound fine. Yuri particular, Yuri practically can't keep her eyes open anymore.
I'm not sleepy at all.
Her voice has dropped down to a murmur, and she hastily makes an attempt at rubbing the sleep from her eyes.
Wake me up if I fall asleep again, okay?
Alright, got it. With that, we fall back into a cozy silence. Within a few minutes, Yuri's nodding off once again. She feels so utterly warm beside me. It's making my heart race. There's a certain tranquility about the vulnerability of her expression when she's sleeping. Yuri must be really tired to completely fall asleep like this. I hate to interrupt her well-deserved sleep. After all, she's helped me a lot today, and she should get her, she should get her rest. Plus, it feels really nice to have her sleep with her head on my shoulder. But she did ask me to wake her up again. She might just be too polite to wanna sleep against me, but then again, she might also want me to respect her wishes. Probably overthinking this. I'll just. Damn it! What I do. Yuri is way too complex. I hate this. I'll wake her up. Hey, Yuri. Her eyes fly open as she swiftly sits back up, leaving behind only a memory of warmth on my side.
So sorry about that, and thank you for waking me up. I didn't think that I'd be this drowsy.
No problem. Wanna talk to keep you from falling asleep again?
Sure, that seems like a good idea.
I think I did it this time, guys. I think I finally made a good choice.
Um, so what would you like to talk, to talk, to speak about?
Um, I didn't really think that far. Yuri shoots me, Yuri shoots me an amused smile before looking out the window again.
Hmm, um, may I ask you a silly question?
Ask away.
Do you think that after graduation, we'll all still remain close? Even if we go to different universities and don't get to spend any time together?
Of course, Yuri. Even if our futures take us to different places, I'm not gonna let something like distance stop us from being friends. Truth is, I've put more thought into this ever since I talked to everyone about our futures. But I decided that no matter what, I still wanna stay friends with everyone, and that goes double for Yuri. Yuri gives a gentle smile and scoots an inch closer to me. Sure, sometimes we might be far away from each other, but we got phones, and planes, and trains, and cars, and boats. And, uh, and taxis, and, uh, and, uh, jet boats. If I didn't have any other way, I'd still take the time to walk to see you.
To be honest, that's comforting to hear. Although, you know, we'll still have less time to spend together once we graduate, right?
Well, I have to think we're good enough friends to not let something so like graduation get between us.
Yes, that's true. Sorry, I, I just get anxious about these things.
Nah, it's probably something that everyone worries about. I don't think anyone wants to lose touch with their friends after graduation. Yuri proceeds to look out the window, lost in thought.
Sometimes I think about all the memories we lose as we grow older. For instance, I know that there are some important things my father told me before, but I can never quite recall them. I wonder how much I remember and, uh, uh, how much I remember of today in twenty years' time.
Her voice softens as she speaks, lowering down to a husking timber. I wanna say something comforting to her, but don't know the right words. Well, you know, always just ask your dad about it again, right? I think, as long as you keep in touch with people and don't take away from, and then don't take anyone for granted. You'll be able to continue making happy memories with everyone. Sayori flashes through my mind for a moment as I say this.
I suppose so. Uh, on another note, I believe my stop is coming up.
As the bus nears Yuri's stop, she goes through her bag to check that everything's in place. You didn't forget anything, did you?
No, thankfully not.
Want me to walk you home?
No, no. I wouldn't want you to go that far out of your way.
Shook down for a moment, scuffing her shoes against the floor.
Th- thank you.
What for? There's a hesitation before she answers, but she quickly shoots me a bittersweet smile.
For, for putting up with me, perhaps? I'm sorry, it's just a rather difficult topic for me to discuss. I- it's nothing against you, of course.
Don't worry, I getcha. There's no need to rush and tell me. You have all the time in the world.
I, your patience is forever appreciated.
No problem. If you feel like talking, just let me know and I'll listen. Her expression relaxes as she takes a slow, deep breath.
That means a lot to me, friend.
With a slow wheeze, the bus finally stops to let Yuri off.
Well, I have to get going now. Thank you for everything.
You don't have to thank me, uh, you don't have to thank me all the time, you know. I'll see you tomorrow, Yuri. Waiting one last time, Yuri ducks out of the bus and into the cold night air. Aw, that was cute. Well, thank you guys so much for watching. Sorry about the awkwardness with my dumbass cat. And just as that bell signals the end of the video, so too does, does also signal. The end of this video. I don't know what I was getting out with that, but. Thank you guys so much for watching, and I will spe- and I will talk to you guys in the next video. Have a good one.